And now, boys and girls, let me hear you recite the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Since I was a small boy, two states have been added to our country, and two words have been added to the pledge of allegiance, under God. Wouldn't it be a pity if someone said that is a prayer, and that would be eliminated from schools too? Our pledge of allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, and to the republic for which the flag stands, one nation, under Almighty God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Oh, thank God it's Friday. That's a TGIF to all of you. Thank you for joining me here, by the way. Very rare I do two shows recently, more or less within the same week, but I felt it was important to get some of this off my chest for the week, because what I have to offer is actually much more of our local news in Cameron, Missouri. And the quote, of course, for the today is, "Life is a succession of lessons which must be lived to be understood," Thomas Carlyle. Again, "Life is a succession of lessons which must be lived to be understood." You make mistakes as you go along the way, folks. We all do. I don't care what anyone says. We all make mistakes. But in short, but in short, we have to learn from them and grow from them, because that's how we become better people. None of us just pop out, technically speaking, pop out to be great people, good boys and girls. It just doesn't happen. Every now and then you may have that one child that you will, out of a few, that you may have in a family, that you can say you just didn't have nowhere near the problems with that kid overall growing up. And you know, that's where we're at right now. So, without further ado, I'm going to put up to you, this is an embarrassing moment, and I'm going to tell you, we have to look at our, we have to look at what's going on in our country. So, a gentleman who's a retired law enforcement agent witnessed this, and he said this to me two days ago. He wrote to me in a text, "Saw this in Cameron Walmart parking lot Tuesday about 3:00 PM, full of Mexicans or from Central or South America. All males. Did not want to be looked at, some turning away, some glaring at me. Most would hide behind the bus or between the bus and semi. Four or five went into Walmart." Key point to this message, folks. Bus had no license plate, no lettering of any kind, no registry, no VIN listed, no DOT or ICC numbers, and no fuel apportionment sticker. Now, on the rear where the license plate would be, was a piece of paper with a flimsy plastic bag held on with tape. When it wasn't blowing in a breeze, it appeared to be handwritten. You know, folks, these buses, they're bright yellow, in this case with him, it was a bright yellow bus. Black windows all the way around. It actually looked, believe it or not, it actually looked like, basically, if you had a whole bunch of those buses, it would be a swarm of bees, thus therefore, a swarm of illegals coming into our country. If you see a bus like this in your area, call your local authorities. But I will tell you, technically speaking, these buses are regulated by the federal government, and most likely will not be subjected to any kind of search slash or seizure by the local authorities. But my biggest question, as many people would like to consider asking, how many of them, seriously now, how many of them made it back on to their bus? My reply to this was, nothing to see here, except if anywhere dropped off for good. Or all made it back onto their next stop. Is there anything wrong with this message of awareness, or does the United States of America have to continue to go along with these bus rides for free? Yes, technically, we are on those buses, and we are riding those buses for free. The next piece I'm really going to enjoy showing you is an embarrassment. Again, this is the second embarrassment of the week to the Cameron community. And what am I going to show you here? It's an eight-minute-long video, but please pay attention. The woman Gina Reed in the audience is a city council member. At the end of this, I'm hoping, at the end of this, that you will see this, and make your own judgment on it, okay? Please, make your own judgment on this. So, I'm going to start this up in literally a minute or so. Here we go.
Nothing else has happened. We have to relax the board and do the things that we're committed to do through this going, whether we're able to, we're being transparent or not. But I'm begging you to think about this. I'm begging.
You probably need to go back into a regular session.
I recognize what your opinion of me is. Y'all have to finish this place for three years. I said I had a meeting. Excuse me. I said I had a meeting. I have sat here and sat here and listened to this bulletin that I wish I'd said, will I call up the other word and I asked for, I asked for control of the meeting?
We need to get under control.
All right.
We need to walk out of my reach, and we need to act professional, councilwoman.
Well, I will point out, do not interrupt me. This is a public, this is not public participation. I'm asking that we may be called to work. I'm asking the chair to call the meetings over. Do you want advice or help or not?
There's the,
do you want advice and help or not? I am happy to ask if we can go back into the regular session.
Go back to the regular session.
If that's the appropriate idea, and I apologize to the rest of the board if I raised something that I didn't know was a rule. Would someone stand in motion to go back into regular session? If I may mention.
Do I have a motion to go back into regular session?
I just did.
Thank you for having a second. Yeah, you do. I want to get what she asked for, okay? So, would they go back into regular session, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, now let's.
I would like to hear what you want to say.
If they can be, if they can be, if they can be,
All right, I will mention that we are still in the fourth year of this mainstream program. I've been elected president for another year. After that, the prince will become president. And we will be having a succession plan that involves the business people who know what they're doing. I also have been studying the financial aspects of running nonprofits, and also the boards of nonprofits. I've been with them for the last two years. There are things that you can put in place for controls through your financials, so that it will be transparent to all the public, and that it will also help with cash flow.
Are we talking about the state, are we talking about the village?
I'm talking about everything. I'm talking about, I told the board. I'm sorry, this is totally all subject to my opinion.
This is all, we called this back in to discuss whether we want to pay the insurance or not.
We want to hear my opinion. I'm starting from the beginning. I'm asking the chair to call the meetings over.
This meeting is called order, present without.
Thank you.
Present. We're going to continue on the topic of what you were originally wanting to talk to this for about two hundred blocks from Scur Street, concerning the payment for the library insurance. And what you have to say, and then we'll decide what we want to do before we move on.
Thank you so much. I want to apologize to the board if I was off track on the proper way to, if that should have been handled at the election part of the meeting. I created an error in etiquette, or probably true procedure, whatever I had at that, so I apologize for that. If you guys are letting me go back into an interrupted session. And I said a piece regarding that, my office at Chamber Block, which I have. If the board would be willing to understand, I know that it seems like that the $2,200, I guess that for law, I shouldn't say anything. I guess I should just ask, would you just say, what is bothering you the most, just that this, that you are really pushing the city to take that, and you don't feel that they kept your word?
No, they did. They did.
Was I right about saying that that's what is, that's what's happening with our law?
Yes, in fact, we haven't seen any progress on it. We've been steadily spending on the amendment. We are in a deficit here, in this building. We need to talk here about our home before we worry about our life facilities.
I understand that.
My main concern is this building right now. That's my concern. I do not want anything that would be off the ship of the building.
I think there's a chance that we could easily just go back there.
I agree there.
And I think that I called the meeting to, I called the meeting to order.
There's no public participation here. This meeting is called order.
I told you that you don't have, I asked the chair to ask for me. I asked the chair to ask for me.
Studying?
There's been several meetings I said I asked the chair to ask for me.
I've been studying.
You did here. You can't be quiet, or in our meeting. I'm going to ask you, please.
And I'm going to ask you.
And if you can't, I will find somebody to come here and help me.
Okay. In no time. Yes, we need to pay the insurance. Yes, we have committed to five years. Whether the city,
I make the motion this meeting comes to a turn of it.
No, I do not. No. I do not.
Whether the city,
I have a claim of work. I have a claim of work. I'm asking the chair to call the meetings over, and I'm asking that the person interrupting me.
You are embarrassing yourself. You are embarrassing yourself and you're disrespecting this meeting. Now you,
No, she's not even asked to leave. According to Robert's rules of order, she has to leave.
Action to remove her.
Leave.
Leave, councilwoman.
Why do you not listen to advice? Why do you not listen to advice? I cannot,
Man, you're out of here.
You'll sit here until she leaves.
We'll sit here until you're out of this room, if the senator told you not. I get all my,
I'm good.
I'm a non-tenant. So.
Yeah.
And have her removed.
Just because I want to say, the police are being, you've put a lot of money into,
This is all,
I need, I need someone to come up to the, to the whole schoolroom. You've put a lot of money into, Please, sir. They have a lot of transfers in this, please come out. You've put a lot of effort into building. You're, I'm about to need to turn down this thirty.
You know, folks, that was a city councilwoman Gina Reed of Cameron, Missouri, disrupting a meeting of the old historical school that was a closed session to public comments. They were there to show the public transparency of what they were or aren't wanting to do. In the meantime, this woman rudely interrupts these people from doing their meeting for the public to understand how the processes of thought goes into, how the voting goes into. What really is shameful about all this is that this councilwoman Gina Reed, if she were to quote-unquote be at a city council meeting in Cameron, and I were to pull those antics immediately, a police officer, most likely Chief Basher himself, would remove me. Now, this woman, by the way, wants to do things, really, this Gina Reed, wants only things her way, as if you can't tell. And BJ Reed, the woman that was flustered, angry, also apologetic, because, you know, protocol was somewhat broken, blah, 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 and she understood that this was not of her normal conduct, but just to save, she's like, please forgive me, but this woman has to shut up. We got to go on with our show. Now, here's a clincher, folks. The police officers show up, two, with body cameras. Neither of them are using their body cameras. My question to the law enforcement of Cameron community is, if you're going to a 911 call, which that was a 911 call that was made, why would you not protect yourself with the armament of the video to show that you are, you know, you're properly handling the situation as you're going and at it at that moment? It gives you that backup. Hundreds of dollars for a camera, and they're not being used. Maybe it was just, hey, it's a city councilwoman. We don't want to put her on there. No, we need to make everyone, even a city councilwoman as such, held accountable for their actions. Again, if I was there, and I did the same thing, I would have been arrested for either disorderly conduct, public nuisance, a plethora. I'm quite confident of things. So, you know, folks, we live in, sadly enough, we live in very, very, very bad, sick times. So, the last thing I wanted to do, and I'm going to make this short, because again, this is just, how does one put it? It's real news that's happening right now. This has got to be the biggest disappointment to the Cameron School District, to the parents, to the teachers, to the taxpayers, and to anyone living in District Number Nine. What the law says, and what my job is and is not. This comes from Dean Van Schoijk. I'm going to take my time reading this, and I'm not going to give any thoughts of myself. But this is our Senate, I'm sorry, our state representative of District Nine, Dean Van Schoijk's email that went out to myself, several other people, including school board members, and all I can say is, wait till you hear where this goes. "Good day, all. I have received many messages from people to drag me into the discussion regarding books in the Cameron School Library. This email is being sent to all parties involved, so everyone knows exactly where I stand, and exactly what my job is and is not. Attached, please find two PDF files that contains the Missouri State statutes that are relevant to this discussion. Note, please note, the highlighted paragraphs which determine explicit sexual material, obscene, and pornographic for minors. Carefully read these definitions and consult your legal counsel if you need an explanation of the statutes. I have listened to the parties involved in this discussion, seen the posts on Facebook, and watched video of the Cameron School Board meetings that have been posted concerning this subject. I am well aware that folks on one side don't think I've listened to them, and that I am not concerned. Nothing could be further from the truth, but I will not be bullied, shamed, or coerced in any way into getting into a local issue that does not fall under the purview of my job. Now, let me explain my job as I see it. My job as Ninth District State Representative is to represent all the people of my district to the state of Missouri, to propose and vote on laws and budgets for the state of Missouri, and to help my constituents with problems they may have with state government. I listen to and work for the best interests of my constituents. My constituents include county officials, school board members, city officials, law enforcement officers, and members from the public, from many walks of life, in no particular order. Now, let me explain what my job is not. My job is not to tell the elected school board what to do, other than the laws and budget items we pass that affect schools. There are plenty of those. But once laws are passed, it is up to the school boards to do what the law says. It is not my place to enforce or interpret those laws. The school boards have legal counsel who can advise them of the law and how to follow the law. It is not my job to tell any superintendent of schools what they should or should not do. That is the job of the elected school board. Dr. Robinson has informed me of the steps that the Cameron School District has taken regarding the books in the library. He informed me that the school has put parents in charge of what their child does and does not check out of the library. The school has addressed the issue and has put parents in charge. It is not my job to enforce laws. It is the job of the executive branch of government, specifically the county sheriff, the highway patrol, and the attorney general. This is their job, not mine. It is not my job to interpret laws. It is the job of the judiciary branch of government, specifically the courts. I am not a lawyer, and I do not give legal advice. Again, if you do not understand the law, please seek advice from your legal counsel. It is my sincere hope that all parties involved in this issue can come to a resolution. A wise man once said that most arguments go away when everyone understands the definition of the terms. Please read the laws that I have attached and seek legal advice. I will not attend any school board meetings or advocate for any position regarding the books in the library. That is not my job. So, I'm right now opening up what he has quote-unquote highlighted, "An explicit sexual material. Any pictorial or three-dimensional material depicting human masturbation, deviant sexual intercourse, sexual intercourse, direct physical stimulation, or uncloth genitals, sadomasochistic abuse, or emphasizing the depiction of a post-pupatorial human genitals provided. However, thou works, that works of art or of anthropological significance shall not be deemed to be within the foregoing definition." That would be his stance. He's going right by the law. And you know, folks, seriously, we did find books with pictures. Not many. I think two, maybe three. But the second one that he highlights, "Explicit sexual material." Apparently, here we go, "Any pictorial, three-dimensional, or visual perception, including any pornography, film, video picture, or computer-generated image showing human masturbation, deviant sexual intercourse, as defined in Section 566.010, sexual intercourse, direct physical stimulation of genitals, sadomasochism abuse, or emphasizing the depiction of post-pupatorial human genitals, provided, however, that the works of art, when taken in as a whole, have a serious artistic significance or work of anthropological significance. Or materials used in science courses, including but not limited to materials used in biology, human physiology, sexual education classes, shall not be deemed to be within the foregoing definition." So, really, do we have to teach, I'm being serious here. Think about what was just read for a moment. You may have to listen to it again. But the bottom line is this, it's even written down there, I saw one word, "biological or physiological classes." That means that would have to be within grades of, say, ninth through twelfth grade. "Why is human sexuality a topic of curriculum for K through third graders?" With that, I leave you with those thoughts. We have a gentleman who's representing us, that we voted into office. He says it's not in his way, his purview to be a part of. But the sad part about it is, we elected him, and we want him to put a stance, or at least let the school board know what their stance and position is. I had them, I had a, last week, or just the last show, I actually read an email from the, from the school board superintendent who admitted that the books that they had in the library for twelve years that he has been paying the check on, that he has allowed to come into the books through the librarians, Tanya O'Boyle being specific. He even added at the end, "Our day has come," last Thursday, in an email. He knew that he did wrong. Folks, we need to gather together, we need to get a special campaign together to go against people who are in office, who sit at the highest positions, that are saying, "This is okay." I'm not saying we need a priest. I'm not saying we need a pastor. But we have to have common sense, and we have to realize we don't have to subject children, R through three, three through eight, into any of these safe places. By the way, don't tell your mommy or daddy that I allow you, that I'm the teacher and I allow you to dress up, and I allow you to role-play. We're not going to tell your mom and dad about this. That's not education. Come on. Is that really education? I don't think so. But to hide the parents from what's going on has got to be the most hurtful thing that a parent can feel. If their child is struggling with quote-unquote, whether they want to be called Cindy or Charlie, that parent needs to know. And no school under the sun should be authorized or trying to give or endorse children with medications, with all kinds of sex hormones, even to the point of placing these kids at such a tender young age, under the knife, at eight, ten, twelve, changing and altering their physical bodies. I'm going to say it real simple. If you don't believe in God, that's okay. I'm okay with that. That's on you. But I'm just going to say it like this. When you came out of the womb, when you entered the world, you were either a boy or you were a girl. You either had the X chromosomes, or you had the Y chromosomes. If that child grows up and starts displaying oddities, oddities that don't seem normal for the other kids in your household, or even for the kids in the neighborhood, but more so, the odysseys that you know, parents. I have a cousin that has a son that's 22 that goes as a girl, and I told her that's wrong. He needs, and as I'm going to get back to now, those types of children that are showing these oddities, they need a little extra love from their parents. They need a little extra guidance from their parents. They need, perhaps, to see and seek mental health. Helpers, psychiatrists, counselors, therapists, sociologists, psychologists. There is a thing called gender dysphoria, folks. Let's not kid ourselves. It's out there. It's been known for about 72 years in the, It's out there. It's been known for about 72 years in the psychiatric practice. This is a mental illness. Now, once they get old enough and they really dedicate themselves and they're 22 years old and they want to lop off this, lop off those and add to this and take away that, they could do that. But I will tell you, they're lying to themselves or being deceptive to themselves. They are misguided and mentally challenged to the point that society on whole, I myself, I've had men, let me rephrase, I had a man come up and approach me saying, you know, are you with anyone? And I said, yeah, my wife's in the bathroom. Oh, what a sin. No, that wasn't a sin. That's because, well, number one, I wasn't married. It was my girlfriend. But I just wanted him to know that, you know, I'm okay with being a man in a gay bar with my girlfriend at the time. I was okay. Why? Because I'm not gay. Now, if I want to do that, that's my business. I'm mature enough. I think I was 30 years old or near that anyway, 28, 29. And Charles and I actually became friends. I didn't hold it against him. I wanted to knock his block off at first. I'd never had a man call me handsome. Never had a man ever say they were interested in me. But it got my toxic masculinity going. No, it just got my masculinity going to say, I'm standing my ground. I'm with my girlfriend. We're here for a reason. I did eventually tell, we were expecting several lesbian couples to come to our apartment for the weekend and we just wanted to know what bar would be the best bar to take them to. That's the story. And as always, one thing about my story, and I'll tell you this, or my stories, if I tell it to you one way, you're going to hear it 20 times again and it's going to be told the same way. The truth will never be altered. Even a dumb person, stupid person can remember the truth, Judge Judy. With that, I say farewell. The logbook is going to be coming up next. I hope that you've, uh, enjoyed this little bit of information. Again, the feds are against us. So with that being said, I hope that you will, um, appreciate, um, what we're doing here on the Common Denominator Network. Uh, we've got many different shows. My show, of course, Vincent's Voice. Thank you for joining me. I love all of you and I mean that sincerely. Um, we've got the logbook with Dakota and Kimberly Moyers. They are shaking rattling the world for the vets, proposing bills on a state floor of Texas, on the, uh, federal floor, on, at the Capitol. The, the, they're, they're the type of people you want in your corner. And last but not least, please follow and, and get some of the humor, get some of the satire, get some of the mind-boggling facts. I got, I, I don't know any other way of saying it, but sometimes truck it, which I love the word, truck it. Truck it puts on a great show and in doing so, it just kind of hits a, hits all kinds of different, um, how does one put it? Hits all kinds of different topics. So please join us as we, and we promote, by the way, on Common Denominator, we could promote many other, uh, if you go and look down a page and scroll, uh, LFR Family, well, with Van, we promote the Hodgkins Brothers. We promote, of course, Joe Rogan, uh, HTX Tech, uh, HTX Renegade out of Houston. We really want good people doing good things to help all of us get through this flipping mess. Yeah, you know the word I wanted to say. You know? And lastly, he who dares not offend cannot be honest. With that being said, I'm going to leave with our, my, one of my favorite songs.
The song is For All Americans. I just wrote this last night. Well, some say I'm troubled, some say I'm extreme. Cause I love this country and their American dream. And I let no politician tell me what to do. Cause my blood runs red, white, and blue. Yeah, I was raised country with work on my hands. Well, you respect your neighbor and you respect the land. And I let no president tell me what to do. Cause my blood runs red, white, and blue. Yeah, my blood runs red, white, and blue. Yeah, daddy taught me right from wrong. I want to be humble, I want to be strong. And I fight for freedom if that's what I must do. Cause my blood runs red, white, and blue. Now, power was passed while I was off to war. And this country is changing like the same anymore. But I'll fight for freedom. Yes, I'll fight for you. Cause my blood runs red, white, and blue. Hope you like it. Keep the faith, brothers. Stay strong. Fight for freedom.
I had to try something different there, folks. I put all the comments up because I was going so swiftly through this. I didn't want to interfere with the, the next show coming on in 20 minutes. But again, from the bottom of my heart, thank you all for joining us. Peace.